I'd like to call this regular council meeting of January 27th to order. Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda with any additions, Councillor Sewell and Councillor Nixon. All those in favor? Motion's carried. And I need a motion to receive the public hearing minutes of zoning amendment by law number 2060, which is 2077 Mount Gabriel. Motion is by Councillor English, Councillor Orlando. Any discussion on that motion? Motion's carried. Playing a little music, that's good. I need a motion to receive the minutes of the public hearing for... I've got a different idea of what I do. Public hearing, uh... Receive the information for the minutes of the public hearing for zoning amendment by law number 2061. Councillor Nixon, Councillor English. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. And I need a motion to receive the minutes of the public hearing for zoning amendment by law number 2062. Councillor English, Councillor Sewell. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. And, uh... I need a motion to adopt the council minutes of January 13th. Councillor Orlando, Councillor Nixon. Any discussion on that motion? These are... All those in favor? Motion's carried. And I need a motion to adopt a special council meeting of January 19th. Councillor English, Councillor Orlando. Discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Uh... Don't have a lot of announcements today other than it was... I got a meeting in front with Minister Todd Stone, Minister of Highways, as well as Minister of Energy and Mines, Bill Bennett, and the Attorney General Suzanne Anton. That'll be happening in Victoria on February the 17th to talk about, uh... this community and Golden's ideas on how we can, uh... reduce the amount of highway closures, reduce the length of time, and hopefully make traveling on the Transcanon Highway a little bit safer. So, looking forward to that meeting and bringing back information to the community. Uh... We have two delegations today, and our first delegation is Jill Zacharias, our social development coordinator.
Okay. Oh, sorry. So I look like Mike Hooker now, don't I? I just... I over-reserved her.
Absolutely.
I just ticked off two names. This is Jill, um, on behalf of the Social Development Committee, because I walked in and Jill said, "Okay, well, you could do this," because our chair wasn't able to be here today. But as vice-chair of the Social Development Committee and as superintendent of schools and a member of the community, I just wanted to introduce Jill and remind the council and the council how important the work of the Social Development Committee is to us as a community and how much we value the work that Jill does and supporting that work. And personally, how much I've enjoyed my time in the Social Development Committee and appreciate the support that it gets from the city. So, I'm pleased to be able to be here today and hear Jill's overview for social development to bring the councils up to date with where the Social Development Committee is at. So thanks very much for the opportunity to welcome Jill.
What a great introduction. I'm sure we might somebody introduce me like that.
So, thank you, everyone, and congratulations to the new councillor, Jill, returning. And, um, thank you very much for this opportunity today. So, since so many of you are new, I'd just like to... I thought I'd start off with a brief history. And I just want to say too that I've had bronchitis for a couple of weeks, fighting that terrible flu. So hopefully my voice makes it through the presentation today. Um, so in 2001, social priorities were embedded into the, um... Revelstoke area community development action plan for the first time. Prior, community development planning had focused on economic development only. During annual reviews of priorities and actions, it became very apparent that while work was being done on economic development priorities, we're really falling behind on identified social issues and priorities. In most cases, social sector staff had no time and very limited resources to move forward on community-wide social goals. This was reiterated in the 2007 Community Development Action Plan update, which contained a clear recommendation for the Social Action Council with support from the Department of Community Economic Development. Other indicators in the community signaled an increasing need for action with one of the main drivers, of course, being the growing complexity of social issues in Revelstoke, because we became more of a resort community. Um, I don't know if any of you have an opportunity to read the Brandt Harley report, but in 2004, Brandt Harley and Associates associates released a socio-economic and land use assessment of the potential impacts of the proposed Mount Mackenzie expansion plan. A number of potential social impacts were flagged, including increases to the cost of living, housing affordability and availability, changes both positive and negative to the social and physical character of the community, increased demand for variety of services and the like. The report also contained a number of recommendations and mitigation strategies. If you haven't yet read the Brandt Harley report, I suggest you do. It really is an excellent read, uh, super interesting now that we're eight years into having the sort of development on our doorstep. So through all of this, Councillor Nanny Richardson, who had the social portfolio at council at the time, spent nine years lobbying for advisory and staff support, and I'm sure you remember clearly, recognizing that it was very challenging to move forward on community-wide social issues otherwise. Social items would be referred to city council, but there was no capacity within the city to take action. So given all of the above, late in 2007, the city allocated some resources and initiated the process to get things off the ground. Eventually, the Revelstoke Community Social Development Committee was formed as an advisory committee of city council. And by July 2008, I was part in a part-time contract position. So it's currently a half-time, eighty hours a month or half-time, um, position. So the committee provided input into my work plan as well as being informed for discussion and inter-agency communication around social issues. One of the more important roles of the Social Development Committee, I think, is to provide city council with information and recommendations on emerging community-wide social challenges and priorities, so council is aware of what's going on in our community. The Terms of Reference for the committee state that the primary objective of the Social Development Committee is to facilitate proactive planning for positive social change in Revelstoke. But at this point, I think we could add that the committee also facilitates implementation of positive social change in our community. Um, that's what I like to say when people ask me what I do when I go up the chair. And I'd like to give you anyhow a couple of examples of positive social change. So when I first started working for the city, our seniors association was one of the community organizations that was in crisis for a variety of reasons. And because of the hype and boom around ski resort, seniors in Revelstoke were really feeling up behind. One of the overarching goals that had come up in our planning process was to remain inclusive of all ages and to enable seniors to live out their lives and be supported in our community. So I immediately started working with the seniors association and other city departments on a variety of initiatives. So we started with the Age Friendly Plan, which included a senior survey, coordinated a board development session of the seniors association board of directors. And then I started doing a lot of stuff behind the scenes. Organized learning events and speakers at the seniors center on a monthly basis for years. We produced a local seniors resource guide, which we're just looking at updating. Provided grant writing support for capital upgrades to the seniors center amongst other things, including acquiring funding and assisting with the hiring process to establish the volunteer coordinator position at the seniors center. And this includes all the volunteer programs, like the volunteer medical transportation program and other programs that are, we now know are eventually, uh... supporting primarily low-income seniors as well as supporting social inclusion. Uh, work of public works on the Gritbox project. And through the hard work of Alan and others, we got new, twenty-four new subsidized rental housing units for seniors and disabled. We approved public transit routes and established a handy car three days a week. I also assisted the Parks and Parks Department to acquire funding for the seniors' exercise equipment at the Pope Arch Park. So in total, I assisted the seniors association and the city to acquire a fund of $145,000 in funding, external funding, to support seniors in Revelstoke. And we achieved measurable results. In the community survey, which is done every five years, uh, between 2007 and 2012, the number of respondents who were satisfied with senior support services increased by nearly 20%. And the number of respondents who were dissatisfied with senior support services decreased by 11%. Provincially, we're honored to be one of the first nine communities in DC to achieve, uh, receive Age Friendly Achievement recognition. Revelstoke's also featured in an Age Friendly Communities video, which is part of the provincial Age Friendly toolkit. And they also used our implementation summary from the Age Friendly Plan. And, uh, we're one of the first three Age Friendly Community Action summaries featured on the province's website. Since 2008, we've seen more than a 30% increase in seniors association membership. And the senior center is just booming. Uh, so the seniors association's solid. I still touch base with them every once in a while to, more than anything, to receive input on certain things or just check in, see how things are going. But they're doing just great, and I've been able to turn my focus elsewhere. Just youth. By 2010, supporting youth in Revelstoke emerged as a top social priority in our community. As well, we had just completed the Substances Strategy, which our primary community goal was to develop partnerships and collaboration to create a comprehensive prevention framework to strengthen protective factors and address risk factors for children and youth involved in problem substances. So in October 2010, in partnership with O'Kraun College, we held the first Youth Initiative Committee meeting. Shortly thereafter, OC got funding to complete the Youth Action Plan with the Youth Initiative overseeing the project. After the completion of the Youth Action Plan, Revelstoke was very well positioned to become one of the first communities to enter into CBT's four-year Community Directed Youth Funds program. As, so I was able to assist the Youth Initiative Committee to develop its Terms of Reference, do the work required to submit the expression of interest to CBT, facilitate setting priorities for action and use of the funds, develop a job description and work plan for a youth liaison, form a new liaison hiring committee and assist with the selection process, mentor new youth liaisons and assist the executive with getting everything off the ground, facilitate communication between CBT and the Youth Initiative Committee, carry evolve in our first youth liaison lab to do a masters, we transitioned the job to Megan, establish the Youth Advisory Committee as a committee of council, establish the Youth Mental Health and Substances Committee, assist with further grant writing and project development, including seed funding to establish the Youth Access Fund to address financial barriers for youth participation in sports, recreation and cultural activities, fine-tune the new youth liaison work plan with clear deliverables, until everything again became really solid. In total, we funded nearly $120,000 to support the Youth Initiative related projects. And this doesn't include the funding that Megan is now bringing in herself. So everything was just rippling in. And so although I still provide staff support for the Youth Advisory Committee, it really has a life of its own now, as you'll hear today. Megan's doing an excellent job. And as of this past September, although I'm still the primary liaison between the Youth Advisory Committee and Alan, um, I've really pulled back and left it all in the hands of Megan and the committee as a whole. So, uh, again, I can focus my energy elsewhere. So again, um, many things came together to create the catalyst for taking on poverty reduction in Revelstoke, including social sector input and other research. So in June of 2012, we completed the Poverty Reduction Strategy. In October 2013, the Poverty Reduction Action Plan. Since then, we've been focusing on implementation. We formed the Poverty Reduction Working Group. And the purpose of the working group is to track progress on what we're already doing, so local poverty, other local poverty reduction initiatives, dialogue on how to move forward on recommended actions, develop community partnerships and apply for project and program-based funding available, and to raise awareness of poverty-related issues in the community. And because housing security was one of the indicators we used for the strategy, and we had collated all this data, it was able to provide the housing society with the statistical evidence they needed to complete their occupation in CBT, VCT Housing, affordable rental housing partnership opportunity. Uh, the group, the working group also recommended to the housing society to move forward on an emergency shelter feasibility study, which is now nearing completion. We're in the midst of a two-year financial literacy project in partnership with the Columbia Basin Alliance for Literacy. I mentioned the Youth Access Fund. And on the raising awareness front, last spring, I spoke to both Rotary and the Chamber about our poverty reduction initiative. And this past fall, I completed the nine-part series on poverty reduction in The Times Review. Throughout all of this, we've discovered that Revelstoke is one of the few, if not the only, community of our size across Canada to have completed a poverty reduction strategy. Um, the work has got the attention of many other communities. And last summer, I was asked to be part of the panel that presented at the annual UBCM convention in September on tackling poverty at a community level. In the meantime, the Revelstoke Credit Union has come forward along with our local community features to take the lead on a local living wage initiative. This past fall, the Credit Union provided the resources and manpower to update our living wage, um, calculation, which has now been approved by the Canadian Centre for Policy Alternatives and Living Wage for Families DC. And this is absolutely critical, because it's the business community taking the lead on this, which is incredibly exciting for me. Um, I provided support for the process and completed a report, which is now posted on the Social Development website. Um, and actually, you can read it at The Times Review. Oh, it's just written article today, posted it online. Our living wage is now calculated at $18.87 an hour, which is like the third hottest in DC. Um, also, in the meantime, the Columbia Basin Trust has come up to support poverty reduction initiatives in basin. Uh, currently, CBT is paying for Vibrant Communities Canada membership for all basin communities working on poverty reduction, including the city of Revelstoke. And throughout all the process that I've been working on, Vibrant Communities Canada has provided tremendous support, tremendous amount of resources and one-on-one phone conversation as we've gone through our process. So it's great to actually be a member of Vibrant Communities Canada initiative. So so far, we brought in about $61,000 to support poverty reduction-related work in our community. But with poverty reduction, our work is not yet done. I feel we're just beginning as we try and impact long-term positive change in our community. So I think that one of the most important aspects of the work we do is supporting the social sector. Um, I'm continually looking for opportunities to provide training and support to the sector to facilitate that organization capacity building, partnership development, and inter-agency communication. Um, Gary was asking about emerging social priorities. Uh, you know, for seniors, we've got bestest-in-living, best natural care in the adult day program, and our accessibility to businesses and public buildings. We need to seriously keep an eye on all these things, all these services, and work closely with interior health and other providers to ensure that the needs of an ever-increasing aging population are being met. For children and youth, we have the Youth Initiative Council. We have an amazing family childhood development, uh, committee to support ages zero to six. But what about middle years? A gap in community support for children aged seven to twelve is really beginning to emerge. Part of this is digging deeper into the prevention of problem substances. What more can we, as a community, be doing for our children? So further, also further to implementation of the Substances Strategy. Uh, you know, I've heard that alcohol-related incidents continue to be one of the most frequent problems for our RCMP and liquor laws that are changing. How will these changes impact us? What more can we be doing as a community to address alcohol-related issues and support safety in a positive atmosphere in our establishments and RST? Becoming, uh, being a welcoming and inclusive community. We've got Welcome League. We've got the New Parents Guide on the website. And I'm currently assisting the Fledge and Safe Spaces group to build capacity to support the LGBTQ community in Revelstoke. And this is actually very real. I got a call from a young man moving to Revelstoke from Toronto. He picked up my name online, and he was like, and he was saying, "Is it safe for me to be moved into your community? Is it friendly?" And I'm like, "Yeah, so..." As our community continues to change, is it ever... It is ever increasingly important to pay attention to ensure our community spirit remains positive and attractive and that our sense of belonging remains strong. Two other areas that I'm only temporarily involved in but are critical to the social sustainability of our community, our housing and transit. This winter, we're very close to experiencing a rental housing crisis. With transit, we fought long and hard to get help with transit. And now we need to figure out a viable way to keep it going. With both these things, we need to look to the future and really think about how best to move forward. At the bottom of all this is community resiliency and the overall strength and health of our community. Last year, I worked on a healthy community project that ties all of this together. A vibrant economy and strong community, caste, it's all connected to our social sustainability. So I'd just like to thank, uh, just recognize and thank the city of Revelstoke for, um, and the Social Development Committee for nearly eight years of commitment and support to the social sustainability of our community. And we really look forward to working with councillors, Orlando and Salt. And, um, and that's it. It's kind of a lot in short-term time, but do you have any questions?
Questions from the council? Councillor Orlando?
Yeah, just more of a statement. Uh, looking forward, we have our first meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30. Uh, first time around for this committee, so I know I'm really looking forward to that. And I actually forgot them from Alan Mason, but, uh, I've been reading back through some of the older reports. They're really interesting, so I don't know if I've read the...
Brandt Harley report?
I don't know if I've read Alan's.
Yeah, I've got it. I can, I can just, you know, to...
I've already passed it. No one else has to pass it around to all of the councils. But it'd be interesting to read that report from pre-resort days to where we are today. And you go through all the list of things that you've been involved with over the last years, the last eight years. It's pretty impressive. And I think that when, I remember when we set up the whole Social Development Coordinator position, it was actually Councillor Richardson that really buttonholed everybody, including myself, to get on board. And, uh, during the campaign, I was reading the poverty reduction strategies and actually really opened my eyes on a couple of things that I never really had thought about over the years. So I think it's, uh, I think it's great. I think you're doing a great job. And I think it's something that's really needed in the community. And just looking at the presentation, I think proves that. So, thanks for the presentation, Jill.
Thank you very much.
Yes. So our next delegation is Megan Shandrell with the Revelstoke Youth Liaison.
So thank you for having me here today. My name is Megan Shandrell. And as the youth liaison, I wanted to give you a brief update about the whole youth initiative that Jill mentioned and talk about some of the priorities and progress that we've been working on and she's been working on. So with the support, so, as Jill mentioned, the youth initiative really gained steam in 2010, 2011. And by 2012, with the support of the Social Development Committee and Jill and Alan Mason, we were able to secure funding over a four-year period with the Community Directed Youth Funds from the Columbia Basin Trust. So we were one of the first communities to receive this funding. And this is, the funding is $100,000 over a four-year period. We're currently in our third year of funding. And after conversations with the Columbia Basin Trust, it's, um, I'm really confident that we will continue to receive funding and if not more than what we currently are receiving now. So we recognize the value and the importance of the work we're doing to engage youth in meaningful ways in our community. So while the city holds the funds, I want to make it clear for those that are new to city council, um, this funding is independent of the city's current operating budget. So we don't reply, or rely on the operating budget of the city. So we're using this funding, as Jill mentioned, to bring in additional funding to support youth programming services in Revelstoke. So it has been an exciting two and a half years since we received the Community Directed Youth Funds. We've had many different projects on the go. And time has really been spent building relationships, building strong foundations for the work that we're doing between different service organizations and with youth themselves. This past year, we did an update of the Youth Action Plan. So this was a plan that was originally developed in 2011. I had the privilege of working on that plan. Um, we took a look at community assets, progress, activities, priorities, everything that was happening related to youth and what we were lacking. So we recently updated that plan. Also, this past year, 2014, as a result of some of the work that Jill's doing for poverty reduction strategy, we were able to secure funding to launch the new Youth Access Fund. So this again is a fund that will help to remove barriers for youth from local families to participate in sports, recreation, arts and cultural programming. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So as a community, we've seen an increase in opportunities for youth engagement. Um, organizations such as the Revelstoke Arts Council, the Performing Arts Center, the North Columbia Environmental Society, the Local Theater Company, the School District, Community Connections, Parks Canada, Stoketham, and many other organizations have contributed to this by accessing additional funding to support youth programming in our community. So all of these organizations I work closely with and help support some of this funding that we received in our community. However, there's still more to do to ensure youth are actively informed and engaged citizens. So our attention this past year has focused on the following priorities that were outlined in the 2014 Youth Action Plan update. So they include communicating with youth to ensure that youth are aware of opportunities and services. Uh, one of the things we did this past year was work with Stoketham to access some funding, and Stoketham's taking the lead. They received funding from the Columbia Basin Trust Youth Grant Stream to actually launch a media project. So working with youth, and The Times Review has also stepped up and is going to be featuring a youth section in the paper, a monthly youth section, highlighting, you know, everyday average and extraordinary youth accomplishments and really showcasing what's happening with youth in the community. So that's really exciting. And another priority is to work to remove barriers to participate in sports, recreation, arts and culture. And the previous Youth Access Fund that both Jill and I have mentioned was launched this past fall. And we're really excited about that. This is, we had really strong interest. Since we've launched it just a few months ago, we've already had a number of inquiries, a number of referrals. And it's really highlighted some of the other needs in the community and important work of the poverty reduction work. Many basic needs, you know, beyond, that go beyond to sports and recreation. The basic needs are coming to light that youth, you know, are finding, uh... You know, we're not able to meet those basic needs and that kind of thing. So they're really being illuminated after launching this fund. Um, so support for, also support for inclusive community events and youth-friendly projects and ideas, youth-driven projects. So this past year, we've supported four youth action grants. And this is another grant stream from the Columbia Basin Trust, where youth can apply for money to pursue projects that they're interested in. So we've been successful in every grant that we've put in. And I helped and worked directly with youth to put those grants into the Stoketham Network, access an advisory to meet some youth advisory. So we talk about issues, and if there are any issues that concern youth that the city council is working on, I will bring them to you. So also, finally, one of the focuses this past year has been supporting youth mental health initiatives and supporting the Youth Mental Health and Substances Youth Subcommittee. We work on various different initiatives. Uh, one event, we'll be running our third annual wellness fair during the health week in May at high school. And that's been an annual event as well as various other initiatives. So in addition to all this, I'm working on to support the Safe Spaces Initiative that Jill also spoke about, and supporting anti-hate, anti-violence and bullying work happening in schools. We're bringing the Leave Out Violence Education Society, the Love and Peace Society, back to Revelstoke for second time this year, a rotten second time. Uh, we had been here last year to work with youth to create media and that is then presented in schools around anti-hate, anti-bullying. So youth really, really enjoyed that last year, and we're sort of bringing it back again. That's just one of many other projects that we're working on. Um, and also secure additional funding to take youth to Vancouver in conjunction with Revelstoke Secondary School to participate in an annual event called We Day. We Day is an educational event that powers youth to create positive change in our communities, exposing youth to a variety of social and environmental issues, challenging youth to think globally and act locally. This is also becoming an... This is also becoming an annual event in which I've secured funding to, to take youth from our community. So all of this work keeps me very busy, and I'm confident that we are well on our way to ensure all youth feel supported and included in our community. So on behalf of the Youth Advisory Committee and the Stoke Youth Network, I thank you for supporting the work that we're doing for supporting youth-driven and inclusive community initiatives. So, do you have any questions?
Commissioner Nixon?
Just a comment. You didn't have an introduction, but I know that the Grand Canyon at the High School says you're worth your weight in gold, and Megan, a great job that you've been doing.
Oh, thank you.
And just, could you please explain for both of us that might not know what parkour is, what's under your, coming up?
Yes. Okay, parkour, it's basically urban gymnastics. So I'm working right now with the local Crime Stoppers group who have put forward some money to bring in a parkour workshop. And the casp has a large, or active parkour community. And so parkour is, is basically all kinds of different ways to move and through your community. And so if you think about gymnastics, it's like taking gymnastics to the streets and so giving you something to, to do to build confidence. It's all about leadership. It's about, yeah, I feel in your time, something fun, active, and youth are in a safe, in a safe way, learning how to jump and maneuver over things. So it doesn't cost a lot of money for youth to do. They can, you know, they might be walking on a, balancing on something, you know, walking, tumbling, jumping, all kinds of things. So if you go parkour, you'll see some of the work that's happening in your communities. Crime Stoppers uses as a crime prevention initiative, and that's why they're really excited about it to engage young youth, and particularly young males in this kind of activities. So we're working with the Little Acrobats Club as well as the group in the casp, and we're looking at hosting a workshop here in the spring and hoping to establish a parkour group.
Great, thanks, Megan. Questions from council? Comments? Okay. It's pretty obvious that the whole social development is really busy, doing a great job. Thanks very much.
Yes, thank you.
Getting back to the agenda, is there any business arising from the myths? Correspondents? First item is from the Revelstoke Theater Company's storage request. I'd like to recommend refer back to staff in case they can help the theater group come up with something. I know that the Century Valen Building that they're talking about is apparently well-used, and there's not a lot of space available in that building, but hopefully staff can put their heads together, maybe help them try to find some other solutions. Is anybody prepared to make that motion or comments? Councilor Nixon? Seconded by Councilor English. Discussion on the motion?
Just, dear worship, further to that, there are other clubs and associations that have interest in Century Valen Building. So I'm sure there's kind of this of people that are interested in getting in there, so.
Okay. Councilor Orlando?
And that was, that was more or less my comment. I don't know if as part of that report, we could sort of see what the plan is for the building and just have a little bit more information related to the fact that a lot of people are interested in it.
Yeah, well, I think this could be, we're, we're talking about strategic planning, and I think that could be one of the items that's on there.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion is to refer to staff and see if they can come up with something. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Second item is a secondary school bus pass request. Councilor Nixon?
Just refer to staff, and if the funds are there, is there any support going forward?
Anybody have to go to ground and edit as well?
Yes.
Motion, Councilor Nixon, refer to staff. Seconded by Councilor English. Discussion order as well. Councilor Orlando?
Yeah, following up on Megan's presentation, I know at the Youth Advisory Committee, last time, there was talk about getting, getting students on public transit systems, so that might be a way forward, but yes.
Any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Canadian Youth Bosser Workers Request. Anybody want to take any action on this information? Motion from the Revelstoke Rockin' Gun Club, there's a request from them for support, and a later gen item is a letter from Bearware. And Sue Davies is here today, if any of the council members want to ask a question. But the Rockin' Gun Club is looking for a letter of support. Councilor Nixon?
Yes, I certainly support the Rockin' Gun Club moving ahead of this. They did a lot of work years ago down at British Creek, and they had quite a silt problem come down in the summer, but in the fall. And it's, it's quite a bit of work they're undertaking, and kudos to them for doing so. Fish did come back last year, but silt came down and dry tomorrow.
We have a motion on the floor. I need a second here for that motion. Councilor English. Any discussion from council? I guess the impression that I'm under is that they are looking at rehabilitating this back to where it was before, but they, and I know, I appreciate the Bearware as, as a concern. I just don't see this as being a lot more than what they've had in the past. Councilor Orlando?
Yeah, I support what the Rockin' Gun Club is asking for in that there's, they want support for the authority to apply to the B C Wildlife Federation for funding. I think the specifics that are outlined and the concerns by Bearware are something that are regulated elsewhere, not at this table. It's probably through the Ministry of Environment, so I support them in this request to ask for funding, and I imagine that those things are up to other authorities as to exactly how you go about rehabilitating this.
Any other comments from council? Sue, have you got anything you would like to add?
I think that originally, they were talking about bringing the stream back to a sort of natural state, and Bearware doesn't necessarily oppose that at all. But bringing it back to a spawning channel, which is, you know, the order of sort of twenty or so thousand fish, is going to increase the, the number of bears. And that probably won't be a problem unless you've also got, next door, you've got the Oscar Seaport Street Mobile Home Park, which has got a garbage issue. So that, that's the interaction that we're concerned about. You know, bringing it back to a, a regular stream with a regular number of fish is not necessarily something we oppose, but the very high numbers might be something that we'd be concerned about.
All right. Any further comments from council? Motion on the floor, all in favor? Motion's carried. Moving into oral business. Thank you, Sue. Zoning Amendment Number 2058, which is Bird's Drive, looking for a motion to adopt that. Councilor Orlando, seconded by Councilor Nixon. Discussion on the motion?
Are we reading these? Yeah, sure. So, yeah, so it's AA, that zoning amendment, amendment means bylaw number 2058, being bylaw to allow for vacation rental use to be adopted, and this is 50,000, Bird's Drive.
And motion and secondary discussion, Councilor Nixon. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Want to carry it, Councilor?
Sure. And this is from a mint, AB, that zoning amendment bylaw number 2059, being a bylaw to allow for vacation rental use to be adopted, and this is for 1,000 First Street West.
Motion by Councilor Orlando, seconded by Councilor Nixon. Discussion, Councilor?
Yeah, I've spoken in opposition to this one before, and I, I won't support this. When the vacation rental bylaw was brought forward and enacted several months ago, it was, part of the idea of the bylaw is that the neighbors have input, and if they come forward and oppose something, that's something to be considered, and that's part of, a part of this process, and I heard it clearly from the neighbors, so I can't support this.
Is there some ruling about making a motion against?
Yeah.
It's okay, because you can just motion it for this guy.
All right. Discussion on the motion. I guess what I look, what I look at is the exact same thing is, and what is, is it intrusive to the neighborhood? And I'm, I'm concerned about off-street parking, which this area has proven to have ample off-street parking. The neighbors were concerned about water drainage, which staff addressed and I think are well aware of. They're, they're concerned about some of the noise and the partying, which I think that we get and we can get in any neighborhood. So I guess I feel that the concerns that were brought forward were addressed in this area, so I am going to vote in favor of this vacation rental. Is there other discussion on this motion?
Yes, I would like to say something.
And you just go like this, and you're from Alderman School, that's where they taught you. Thank you. Councilor English?
I firmly believe that our bylaw has been created to mitigate the problems that would arise from vacation use, and it does give us a tool to police a vacation rental. So I will support this bylaw.
Councilor Solz, did you ever hand it?
Yeah. Worship, further to Councilor English's comment. We heard the neighbors complaining about previous rental and the number of people in the home. Vacation rental bylaw does give that tool to mitigate that amount of people. So under those circumstances, we've dealt with the other issues with water, and I will support this.
Any more discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Against? Councilor Orlando? Motion's carried. Councilor Orlando, you want to make the next motion?
Yes. 8C, zoning amendment bylaw 2060, 2077, Mountain Gate Road. That zoning amendment bylaw number 2060 being bylaw to allow for vacation rental use, received third reading.
Motion by Councilor Orlando, seconded by Councilor Nixon. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
And 8D, that zoning amendment bylaw number 2061 being bylaw to include vacation rental in our four high-density residential subzone district, received third reading.
Motion by Councilor Orlando, seconded by Councilor Solz. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
8E, that zoning amendment bylaw number 2062 being a bylaw to allow for vacation rental use, received third reading, and this is number 2062, and the address is 412 First Street West.
Motion by Councilor Orlando, seconded by Councilor Nixon. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
And 8F, that 2015 Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw number 2063 being a bylaw to provide for borrowing of money in anticipation of revenue being adopted.
Motion by Councilor Orlando, seconded by Councilor Solz. Discussion. Ever handed the discussion?
I think we had the overview of this at the last meeting.
Any discussion by council? All those in favor? Motion's carried. And next is new business.
So 9A, that policy, P12 Financial Disclosure of Municipal Employees, be amended to reflect the current designated municipal employees.
Motion by Councilor Orlando, seconded by Councilor Nixon. This is basically, this is financial disclosure, a very local government act, it's just an amendment that's come through. Janine?
Done.
It's all right, done. Anything we should know about this?
Do you have any questions?
It's a house.
Yes.
Change it to me.
It is, because change things.
All those in favor? Motion's carried. Economic Development Council. Who's on the committee?
I believe that that's Scott's committee, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Let City Council direct the director of Community Economic Development to establish a community task force to develop a strategy to assist with the development of a high-tech sector in Revelstoke. And that City Council invite the president and chief executive officer.
We'll do that separately.
Okay.
Motion by Councilor English, seconded by Councilor Nixon. Councilor Orlando, did you have a comment?
Just a little bit more background, but I guess, areas of the, I'd say.
That's right.
Scott was in the legal department.
Basically, what this is, is that this went through Economic Development Committee, and it's just looking at setting up a separate committee that would advise council on any of the issues to do with high-tech, whether it's broadband, high-speed internet, free Wi-Fi downtown, possibility of high-tech park, anything to do with, with high-tech and getting a separate committee to help advise council. Anything to add to that, Mr. Mason?
No, I mean, it's, there's been a number of newer people come to town, they're involved in the high-tech sector, and have come forward with some interesting ideas, so it would be good to get these people together and start moving ahead on this.
Any comments or questions from council on the motion? Councilor Orlando?
Just that I absolutely support this. I think it's great. For internet, I know that's just one piece of this, affects me personally every day, and I hear it every day. If there's one comment I get the most, it's let's talk about our internet. So, yeah, I support this very strongly.
Any more discussion from council? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Orlando?
That City Council invite the president and chief executive officer of Rocky Mountain Air, Mr. Randy Powell, to meet with the council to discuss the possibility of having the Rocky Mountain Air include that as a stop on their train route.
Motion by Councilor English, seconded by Councilor Nixon. Discussion on the motion. This is just basically is something to try and work with one of the community and another form of transportation that we especially need when the highways can be closed, but it's just another way to bring tourists in and to provide another transportation amenity to the community. So they feel the best way is to start building a relationship between Rocky Mountain Air and the, and the community. So I'm forward to that. Any comments or questions for council?
Just your worship, in agreement with council not coming down to see you, I actually were supportive of one call from the Rocky Mountain Air, telling me I'd sit on the side trap, and it sounded quite positive that they would be a good partner living in the community.
Good. Mr. Mason, any else to add to this?
No, I cannot say any better than you did.
I got to work on my accent. Motion's on the floor, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Next item is the Development Variance Permit Application.
Yes, your worship, offering forward that the Development Variance Permit application submitted by Andrew Raymond for the property law aid planned 999318 Humbert Street to vary the following, and it's in your packages, council's, I don't have to read the whole thing.
And just that the subject, there is one subject condition of the site elevation plans to be included.
And that the corporate officer be authorized to issue the development variance permit warrants, the above conditions.
Thank you. Motion by Councilor Nixon, seconded by Councilor English. Mr. Struck, can you have a display for us?
Thank you, worship. As noted, the Development Variance Permit is to vary our Mobile Home Park bylaw. This bylaw is a, similar to a zoning bylaw, it was implemented many years ago. With the new zoning bylaw being developed, these two bylaws will be brought together into one zoning district. This particular issue is associated with the size and placement of trailers in the past versus the size and placement of trailers today, so the mobile homes have gotten bigger, but the land stays the same size, creating a bit of a conflict when new mobile homes are placed on existing pads. So this one in particular created some setback issues and applied for variance in order to have it placed on the site. The reason there is a number of variances is it's the vary of the front, the back, and the peak, or sorry, the roof projects out, which requires a third and fourth variance as well. Thank you, worship.
I see we have one letter on this application is... I see we have one letter on this application is not going to be taken into consideration by staff, and this is approved?
Your worship, we did receive a letter with concerns about access for emergency services. This particular application is referred to the RCMP as well as our fire services, both responded with no concerns to the application.
Questions, comments from council? Counselor Solz.
Just one question, your worship. This development variance permit, is that for just one site on this address, or is that for the entire tree department?
Your worship, this particular application would only apply to the one site. It doesn't apply to the entire Mobile Home Park. In fact, it'd apply only specifically for that specific site plan, which includes dimensions only for this site. They haven't indicated a desire to have this variance for the entire park. We really don't, it would require additional survey information, probably quite costly to collect in order to cite the rest of the mobile homes. And hopefully, through the development of the zoning district for mobile home parks, will address a lot of these issues, as we modernize the water.
Any more comments or questions from council? Motion's on the floor, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Counselor Nixon?
Yes, this is the motion that the development permit DP 2014-02 be amended to replace the Schedule A plans with new plans for the construction of a 14-unit affordable housing development on the property law A, and ED 91421, 1012 Oscar Street.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Solz. Mr. Struck, would you mind giving an explanation on this one?
Thank you, your worship. As noted, it is for a, I apologize. This is a site on Moscow Street, it's our Rosestone Community Housing Society, is supposed to construct a 14-unit development on the site. The original site plan included six units, two sixplexes, with a duplex unit in the future in the middle. The amendment is to revise the plans in their entirety, so revise the site plan as well as the landscape plans and so forth. And the new site plan will include access from the rear of the property instead of the front, which will allow for sidewalks to construct over the roadway. And this amendment would move the duplex unit from where it was located in the center between the buildings to the one side, so this side would be the future duplex instead of the middle. And it'll note the change to the profiles to the building, which results in, of course, amendment to the landscape plans as well as to the floor plans to reflect those changes. Thank you, your worship.
Questions from council? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Mr. Solz, yes.
Item 19, the city waterworks acquisition study, that the submission of an application to the Small Communities Fund under the New Building Kenner Fund for Big Eddie Water Capital Improvements be approved. And that one-third share of the eligible project costs and full cost of ineligible costs be included in the city's financial plan, and that all costs be recovered by the city through capital charge on the users of the subject water utility. And that an alternate approval process, referendum for any required borrowing, and for the transfer of ownership of the Big Eddie Water Utility to the city within six months of receiving grant of approval for the project be supported. And that staff be directed to proceed scheduling meetings of the Big Eddie Water Utility and their users, including public meetings to address the proposed plan.
Motion by Counselor Solz, seconded by Counselor English. We'll have a presentation by short representative Mr. Thomas, and then we'll go over to questions and comments from council. Mr. Thomas.
Your worship, my apologies for the long recommendation. These are requirements for the grant application, that we specifically asked council to address these questions, so that we, that council would actually approve the application for the funding, that the city would pay for its fair share of the eligible costs and full cost of ineligible costs under the grant program, and that all costs be recovered through, how we're going to recover the costs, so in this case, to the water utility. And that within six months, we would hold either an alternate approval process or a referendum to determine whether we're going to borrow for the project, and also determine whether the city would end up being owners of the assets of the Big Eddie Water Utility. So, the report that is in your package, it was completed by MMM just last week, and this was something that we started, I believe, probably the week before the election, I think, was when we actually kicked off this project. So, during the last two and a half months, I guess we've had the consultants out on site. Big Eddie Water has assisted us greatly with the information in this report. And, you know, I hope that this assists council with making a decision in terms of applying for a grant today. But more importantly, as after we've applied for the grant, that the community will have an opportunity to ask questions of the consultant, of council, of staff, of the Big Eddie Water Utility, about what these numbers, what this information means to them as residents, whether they're in the Big Eddie or residents in the rest of the city. So, in terms of what was identified by the consultant MMM, they identified several issues with the Big Eddie water system as it stands. And these are the, I guess, the physical assets over there. So, in terms of meeting current and future maximum data man, the capacity of the wells is, it meets, it meets, I guess, the requirements of the Big Eddie now. It doesn't meet, I guess, engineering best practice, maximum data man. And if the Big Eddie were to grow, it doesn't meet the future maximum data man. So, these are calculations that the consulting engineers have undertaken. The capacity of the reservoir, so again, to meet the current and future fire flow storage requirements. So, it's not just about the size of the pipes, it's also about how much water you have in a reservoir for fire flows. If there were a fire, you need storage to be able to draw from. The wells cannot keep up with a fire flow demand, so you need to have that reservoir storage. And then the pipe sizes within the distribution system, so these do not currently meet bylaw requirements in many cases, or industry standards for the provision of fire flows, particularly within the commercial and industrial areas within the Big Eddie. And again, this is information that the consulting engineers have reviewed, the city's bylaws, industry best practice, this is what they do on a day-to-day basis. And these are the issues that they've identified. The fourth issue was hydrant spacing, it currently does not meet the bylaw requirements in many cases, so city bylaw requirements or industry standards, particularly again within the commercial and industrial areas. So, the recommended upgrades can be, again, split into four sections. The first section, supply capacity and security, would involve establishing dedicated feeds to the reservoir, replacing the 200-mill pipe that feeds the reservoir in the future, but that's not a high priority, that would be in the future. Construct a third well that allows for security of supply. And in the future, rehabilitating the existing wells and the pumps. Under storage capacity, that's the construction of a second reservoir to provide that additional fire protection storage. For the distribution of fire protection, this would involve replacing the section of pipe under Highway 23 South, and replacing water main distribution in the northeast industrial area and the southwest industrial area, and then general distribution upgrade as well. For monitoring and communication, that would be installing a SCADA system that is compatible and communicates with the city's current supervisor and control of pumps and reservoirs. So, in terms of what that looks like on the ground, this is in the, this is in the report, and it just goes through, you can see just about every water main within the Big Eddie over the next 20 years is either undersized or reaching its lifespan. And 20 years was chosen for a couple of reasons. It's a manageable timeframe to develop an asset management plan. And looking at the assets over there, a lot of the mains were installed or are of a material that is expected to reach its lifespan within that 20-year period. So, on top of, on top of these sort of, I guess, major capital upgrades, we've also looked at the asset management for the Big Eddie Water Utility as a whole. In terms of how that could be phased out, this is the consultant's best guess at how and the order of priority of those works. So, in the first year, there would be these three individual projects, a total of about $300,000. These are in today's dollars as well, so, you know, obviously, we would need to take that into consideration when we're looking at borrowing or how much we're applying for in a grant. The big ticket item there is the construction of a second reservoir. And, you know, in terms of the need for that, that is primarily because of industrial and commercial properties over there and the increased fire flow demands that are placed on the system because of industrial and commercial problems. About $2 million for a second reservoir. There is room next to the existing reservoir off on the hill to place a reservoir next to it. We're not answering questions on that afterwards. And then, in terms of funding, this is a little difficult to understand, but if we look at the bottom line here, if we were successful in receiving provincial and federal funding, two-thirds funding, a residential property based on the previous program would pay in 2015 around an extra $309 in 2015. And then, obviously, looking at indexing that amount on an annual basis similar to probably construction costs, so the engineering construction index would be how we look at indexing it, and it's specifically looking at capital charges, capital costs for construction Next step. So, these are outlined in 6.7 in my cover report, but applying for the Small Communities Fund, I'm sorry, there's a typo there, this would be, this we need to do if we're going to apply to this fund, we need to do that in the next two weeks here. I believe the closing date is February 15th. If council gives the direction to do that today, we will have the consultants continue work on that, and we will submit an application that complies with those fund requirements. So, City Council meeting with the Big Eddie Water District, this is to go over the report, I guess, council to board, and just seeing if there's any issues with the report as it stands, and if there's any further information that would be designed by the party. Beyond that, moving towards a public meeting for residents, with a focus, obviously, on the Big Eddie residents, because this will specifically impact them, and they are the ones that will have to make a decision on, either in an alternate approval process or in a referendum. Put in there, the grant outcome announced, and I'm expecting that there won't be an announcement for the Small Communities Fund until the fall of 2015. So, there's going to be a pause before we can actually, before I recommend we go to the elector ascent process, so like actually do a referendum on this. And that's mainly because they're going to receive hundreds of thousands of applications, and we're going to have to go through them. And from our perspective, moving forward on this without knowing whether we've got the grant, it's the difference between a resident paying potentially $937 extra in the first year or $390 in the first year. So, we'd like to get some assurance of whether we get that grant funding before we ask the residents to approve a charge to the water bill, basically. And that's it.
Counselor Nixon?
Just, Mr. Thomas, I was talking to Penny Paige Britton earlier today, and I know that she's already had the discussion previously with CBT to look for some funding for water servicing. And the answer she got was there was not, but I think that's something maybe that council should pursue with CBT to make sure that there isn't some funding there, that maybe someone higher up the chain would re-examine the decisions.
Your worship, one of the great things about this project is that even for the small communities grant funding, it is a 10-year program, so we can apply for 10 years' worth of this capital program under the current grant fund that they're proposing. So, during 10 years, we'll have lots of opportunities to ask for money from other funding organizations. If we're looking at doing innovative asset management or particularly capital projects, there's FCM funds and UVCN sometimes has funding for similar projects as well. So, certainly something that I'd be looking at is finding ways to reduce the cost to rent pays or tax pays.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone is clear that what we're doing today, if council approves this, is that we're approving to move forward to look into this, apply for a grant. This infrastructure program that Mr. Thomas is talking about, the city only has one opportunity to put an application in, and we feel that the Big Eddie water is extremely important and has to be done properly. So, there's only going to be the one application put in on behalf of the city, and that's for this Big Eddie water system. The next part, and I want to be real clear, is that we're going to meet with the Big Eddie Water Board and talk to them, go through the whole report with them, as Mr. Thomas commented on, and then go to public meetings and explain everything to the public, because the public is going to have to be involved with this process. And, but because of the type of timeframes, we want to put the application in, knowing that the rest of the process will fall into place, and nothing happens until we feel that we have elector approval. How much, I think that pretty well covers everything. Is there any more comments from council? Counselor Orlando?
Yeah, I'd like to commend staff for their work. It was probably for myself about a year ago, sitting in a board of education meeting, when I heard that the Big Eddie School subdivision was on hold due to this, and that's the first I've heard of this. Over the past year, I've learned a lot, it's a really complicated issue. It really takes some time to wrap your head around all the different, you know, the technical things, the finance things, the democratic process and everything. But I would like to commend the staff on this, and also, I guess, reiterate what the mayor has said, and that there's a democratic process built in here. So, this is something that allows residents in the Big Eddie and the communities to capable of that. But right now, what's on the table in front of us is this deadline for this application, which I believe shows that the city is really going to bat on this issue. We don't get to apply for this grant for everything, it's for one thing, this is a one-shot thing. A lot of people at this table, before the election, talked about the Big Eddie issue as being their number one issue, and this is being a big issue for them. And I think by moving forward and getting this in by deadline and making this application, we're showing that it's a priority. And I think, you know, I had a chance to talk with Mike yesterday for quite a bit about the details, and I have a lot of confidence that this is a good way forward. And I'd really like to see us as a community move forward as a community on this, if there's one thing that I think is really important, Safe Water is one of them, and we trust them. And, uh, you trust over there as well.
Thank you, Your Worship.
And, uh, there's, there's two issues here, of course. One is water quality, which is, I think we all recognize, is the easiest thing to fix. It's the other issues of, uh, of quantity and, and fire flows. And I'm, uh, looking forward to going through this report, especially with Mr. Bueller. And, uh, we'll have lots of discussion about, uh, what's, uh, what's going to work and what's not going to work. But this is the start of the process, this is not the finish of the process. Any more, uh, comments from council? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Uh, asset management software. Anybody want to take this?
Your Worship. Uh, nine F, asset management software, that the contract for asset hire to implement asset management software at a cost of thirty thousand five hundred and two million dollars be approved.
Glad you said that name. Motion by councillor Salisbury, seconded by councillor Nixon. Discussion on the motion?
Just, Your Worship, staff have been asking for this for, I think, four years. And it's ready for the second event. Half the two years.
Any more comments from council? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Uh, RMR, uh, fireworks authorization first. Councillor English.
Bring that forward, Your Worship. Item nine G, that Rebelstoke Mountain Resort be authorized to set off consumer-grade fireworks following any terms and conditions relating to life safety as determined by the fire chief. That Rebelstoke Mountain Resort follow all requirements of the Federal Explosives, Explosives Regulations, two thousand thirteen, Part sixteen, consumer fireworks.
Motion by councillor English, seconded by councillor Salisbury. Discussion, councillor Nixon.
Uh, just if our chief could give us a report on what happened on New Year's Eve. It went well.
It went well. Uh, met with RMR staff, uh, prior to the event. Uh, looked at the site, uh, that was proposed, uh, was satisfied. They had a plan in place and, uh, everything went perfect.
And I could tell you from the Nickel Road Householders Association that I was out on the backyard drinking champagne, watching the fireworks, it was pretty nice. Any more comments from, uh, the staff? Councillor, I should say. Councillor English.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was up there watching the fireworks, it was very well done. Thank you for your help with that, Rob. It was a great show for everyone. But the Nickel Road residents enjoyed it as well.
Motion's on the floor. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Uh, next items are communications. Uh, any, uh, anybody want to bring anything up on the Advisory Committee on Healthcare Minutes? Item B, which is Finance Committee Minutes. Item C, which is Business License Summary. Okay, hearing none, looking for a motion to go in camera. Councillor English, seconded by councillor Salisbury. Any discussion, anyone in favor? Motion's carried. Five minutes. Oh, sorry, David, I forgot, questions for media.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I have, uh, I have a couple, just a couple. All right, yes, it is true. Uh, first one is, uh, directed to, is with regards to, um, the recommendation that Director of Community and Economic Development established a task force. Uh, what kind of ideas have, uh, have you received or heard from, uh, people with regards to developing high-tech, the high-tech sector here?
Um, one of the ideas is that the number of people involved in the high-tech sector, um, you know, the small one-person businesses, uh, set up some kind of support group where they're working together and basically share resources, share office space. I understand there's a project going ahead just at the end of the block here with a number of different businesses. But this one would be specifically for people in the high-tech field to maybe get together and support each other. Um, the other thing I think we could do a better job of is, is promoting ourselves as a, as a place where small high-tech businesses should come to. And I think people that are involved in that industry often have good contacts, you know, across the country or beyond in the high-tech sector. So how could we harness their ability to talk to other people and try and get them to come to Rose?
What do we have to offer people in the high-tech sector that they can't get someplace else?
A wonderful lifestyle. The best newspaper in the country.
I wish.
At the moment, I don't think we're doing anything, you know, in a really concerted way. We're hoping people come here because we have a nice lifestyle. But you're right, there's lots of other communities that do a lifestyle. So how can we do a better job of, of attracting them?
Are we going to get better broadband here?
Well, I think that's, uh, settle for discussion a little later.
But I think that there's, there's a segment of the population that can, that can live anywhere in Canada. And, uh, I think that, uh, a lot of them would like to live here and work remotely or travel to, from their work. And, uh, this would just be another way of, uh, offering them that, that opportunity. So it's just expanding our population base.
Thank you, Your Worship. My second question is with regards to the Rocky Mountaineer. Um, this sig-, under new business, this suggests that, uh, it, it's actually a, a passenger train. In fact, it's just a rolling resort. Um, how does that constitute, uh, an additional, uh, addition to, uh, transporta-, our transportation network?
Well, I think that, uh, the first thing you have to do is you have to open the door and you have to have them here and then look for, uh, opportunities on how it, uh, how the transportation link could relate to other people. And either it's tourists coming here to get off or people that want to arrive. You, but you have to start someplace. And Economic Committee of, uh, Council, uh, thinks that there, there could be an opportunity. We want to start the conversation. And if there was an opportunity that, uh, a, a viatight rail service was interested, I'm sure that we would be more than happy to, uh, talk with them and, uh, and look at that opportunity as well. But the idea is start the conversation, start building a relationship with Rocky Mountaineer and see where it leads. It's, it's only going to be better for us in the long run.
Have they shown any inclination or any openness to, to actually, uh, providing passenger service between the different communities here?
Well, Rocky Mountaineer is always looking for opportunities that, uh, for, for places to stop, to entertain their guests. And, and that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to first get on that list and, uh, knowing that they're, they do their planning processes three, four, five, uh, years out. But it's, you have to start someplace and that's what this motion is doing, is it's starting the conversation with Rocky Mountaineer.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, my final question is with regards to the Big Eddie Water Works and the amount of money that's available under the, this, uh, small ci-, what is it, Small Cities?
Yeah, the Infrastructure Program.
Infrastructure Program. What's the maximum amount of money that we, that we can apply for?
Uh, Your Worship, there is no maximum, uh, actual application amount. Um, I believe that the total amount for, uh, available for the ten years is three hundred and thirty million dollars' worth of projects, in that, in that sort of range. And that in the first year of, uh, of the ten years, they're expecting to commit fifty percent of those funds. So, um, in two thousand fifteen, they will commit, uh, around a hundred and sixty, uh, a hundred and sixty million dollars' worth of projects. So obviously the two-thirds of that.
Is that nationally or provincially?
Uh, that's provincial.
Provincially.
For communities under a hundred thousand residents and regional districts.
So the amount of money that we could, could receive from them would depend on the number of projects that are approved.
We're only allowed to have one application, though?
No, I know, we're only allowed to have one. But if there are, uh, if there are sixty projects or even a hundred projects, um, we're going to get, we would be, we would likely receive less money than we might want or need.
I think that, uh, the way that they look at it is they look at the project and, and, uh, water projects, I feel, are, are high on the, on the list of, uh, ones that get accepted. So it's, uh, it's health and safety and, uh, I think that's the way we look at it.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have no more questions.
Any other questions for media? Alex?
Um, regarding the affordable housing project, is, uh, we get an update on where that stands. I mean, given where it was left off, I guess last we heard before the election, it seemed to be delayed and I'm not sure where, you know, we just find out where things are. And I know now you're the chair and the mayor, so.
Yeah.
Lucky me. Yeah.
So basically the project, uh, we've gone, uh, I won't say back to the drawing board. We've, we've looked at the plan, uh, we've sat down with staff. We've come up with, I think, a better plan with, uh, moving the parking to the back. It's going to, all, by moving the whole buildings more to the front and having a continuous sidewalk rather than off-street parking in the front, it's actually, uh, going to probably create a, a bigger green space in the property. The, the parking in the back is, is going to be better than, and less congestion than having all the cars in the front. Uh, the design, uh, has been reworked because it's a, a steeper slope design. The, the building will be stepped down as it goes down the hill. And, uh, what we're doing is we're going through the, the development permit process, uh, variant amended. And then we're going to be, uh, going after, uh, approved building permit. Drawings are, are being done now. And that would then, uh, allow us to do two things. One is go back over to the marketplace for, uh, for a tender, and also to go to, uh, B C E Housing and get our final approval. Did I miss any of those steps, Alan?
Yeah, no, that's good.
Do you have a timeline? I mean, are you hoping?
A S A P.
Yeah?
I'm hoping that we'll get through all of our process and have a decision, uh, for, for the spring is what I'm hoping for.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Yeah.
Any, any other media that would like to ask any questions?
My counsel.
Okay, five-minute break and then we'll, like, get started.